Okay, we're going live. We've already done the flex at this point. So welcome to our budget review meeting, starting with the county attorney's office, please. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
The answer is no. Anyway, go ahead, please.
I have, I handed out, and I have an extra one for Commissioner Beth and for Ashley. I have-
Here comes Ms. Ashley.
Okay. So I have a little packet for everyone. The top, it's a four-page document. That is our proposed budget for 2023. The second document, and I'll address more specifically, it's just a calendar kind of showing what our dockets are like to show, just, and I'll explain all that. The last page is, I'll get to as well, the last page is a list of cases that need to be set for jury trial or have been set for jury trial, and I'll explain how that affects all this as well. So, stop me if I go too fast. I do tend to talk fast, and I'll try not to be too long-winded, but I wanted to go through this as thoroughly as I could because I do want to let everyone know, like if you'll look at the first page on our proposed budget, carpeel prosecutor system. We're changing software systems. We were on full case. Full case had been connected to the district court. The district court switched to a new one called Odyssey. We're now, we used to be able to communicate, interface, I guess would be the correct word for that. With that system, we can no longer do that. We've had full case since 2003, I believe. So we've had the same software for almost 20 years, right? And so it was time for an upgrade, and we found a system that's going to, I think, make our office work more effectively. We talked to other prosecutors' offices who had it. The yearly expense, which is what's included in this budget, is, I think, pretty much the same, if not a little bit less than what we were paying for full case. So I only point that out because our, the initial amount that it's costing for us to get that, put on our computers, the training, they come down and train you on it, we're using, we're getting using, we're using that from a different fund. We're taking money from a different fund. So it was not included in this. We had that money available. We chose to use that to get our new software system. We are requesting an increase, and if I could explain, it's page two, towards the bottom. It says, "Request Assistant County Attorney and Request Legal Secretary." Both of these are part-time. Right now, if you'll look to the calendar, which this is why I prepared the calendar, I have on the bottom, just to help you kind of understand the calendar, I have our judges. So our district judge, Judge Ward, our magistrate judge, Judge LeBlanc, and the new district judge from Lynn County, Judge Andrea Purvis. She, I believe, is covering forfeiture. So she does handle just a few of our cases down here, which is why I included her. And the bottom on the right are current employees and our office. I am the only full-time attorney. The other two attorneys, they're both part-time. They're available very limited days. They're amazing. They come and they fill out and they cover and they help when they can. But I can't keep asking them to do that because they have other obligations. They're only, you know, being paid for part-time work. So if you'll look, this is August. I'm not quite sure why I skipped July. I think I just was not technologically savvy, so I put in August in there. But if you'll see, and these are typical dockets. It could change. A judge may not have a docket because he's on vacation or whatever that may be. But this is typically when we expect to have a docket and we are expected to have coverage for that docket. Being the full-time attorney and being the county attorney, Judge Ward handles the higher-level cases, so I cover his dockets primarily. Judge LeBlanc is in the pink. You can see when she has dockets. And that very, who covers that depends on which of my part-time attorneys is available. And I did put it, might be kind of small writing, but I put in there which attorney's covering it and which assistant is there to help. We do have our legal secretaries go in the dockets with us just because they're the ones that are responsible for the general entries and the orders and other important things, and they need to be there getting court dates and other information to make sure we get those documents done properly. Now, the issues, which is why I'm requesting another part-time attorney, is if an attorney wants vacation. We're struggling with that right now. It's kind of hard. I kind of wanted a vacation. And, but who's going to cover my dockets, you know? Because I can't keep asking Justin and Brandon to cover other things. Another issue, like today honestly is a perfect example. On Tuesdays, I'm the only attorney here. So I had a judge, a docket with Judge Ward this morning. I have a docket with Judge Ward this afternoon. There are some cases, typically the cases that involve children, that have hearings that have to be set within a certain period of time, 48 hours, 72 hours. And you have to think about the judge's docket, too. So judge is going to say, okay, I have time now. We're going to set it at this time, and I have to make sure I have an attorney available. We had one of those come up today. So I had Judge Ward's docket. I had to make sure I covered that special setting. I had to come and hear, you know, this is obviously my obligation as county attorney, and I have to go straight from here to Judge Ward's docket. This happens fairly frequently, I would say, because there's some cases you can't predict that you're going to get. And when you get them, you have to do what you have to do, and you have to make sure there's coverage. The part-time legal assistant, there's a lot of work that comes a lot along with our jobs. We're responsible for charging. We're responsible for journal entries and orders from every hearing. And you can see there's a lot of hearings, a lot of cases. Responsible for, kind of drawing a blank, you know, just-
A lot of data entry.
Data entry.
Tracking.
Discovery. Discovery is a big thing. We have to make sure that we get evidence from the two law enforcement agencies, gather that, save it, provide it to defense counsel. It's all very time-consuming. And aside from these dockets, I failed to recommend or explain that this doesn't include the time that we spend preparing, preparing for dockets, responding to motions, preparing for jury trials. Which brings us to the jury trial list. The pandemic, we were still open. We were still trucking and working through the pandemic, but courts were closed. The Judge Ward's court has been open for some time now, but he's just recently started setting jury trials. And the reason being is there were still, you know, six feet, everything with the pandemic, the keeping distance and everything was still in place. And we wanted to make sure that those who were potential jurors were safe. So that was being pushed off. Well, now judge is starting to set them, and there are a lot of cases that need to be set. There are also, I counted through them on here, the ones in yellow are the ones that are set. Right now, we have 10 cases that are set for jury trial, starting in August. October's very, very full. So when those occur, that is pretty time-consuming. As far as attorneys, attorneys have to prepare. There are pre-trial motions, pre-trial hearings, jury instructions. It takes a lot of time. Angel is multifunctional. She's my office manager. She helps with Judge Ward's stuff, and she is amazing at jury trials. She gets the witnesses together, does all that stuff. But it's time-consuming. And so, beginning next month, sorry.
And most of these jury trials are person, they're person felonies. So that requires a lot of meetings with our victims and witnesses.
Okay.
Direct-related cases usually it's just the law enforcement officer.
Yeah.
And then having to defend them as well, so.
I'll be there a little bit. What that request for another county attorney, is that full-time or part-time?
It's part-time.
I was just saying, it didn't say part-time.
I'm sorry, it is part-time.
I just think you'd get a full-time one for that.
Two, part-time?
Essentially, what it would be three. So essentially, what we'd end up having is two full-time attorneys and a part-time attorney. That's what it would add up to be. But I don't want to lose who I have now, so I'm just looking to hopefully get another part-time attorney to help us so that we can ensure dockets are covered, we can ensure jury trials are covered, and we're prepared for jury trials.
But there'll be three bodies on part-time?
Yes. And there are no benefits. The two part-time attorneys we have now are not getting benefits.
And part of this is because we're expanding our courts, right?
Yes, yes, that was another thing.
I think that's important to note.
Yeah, thank you. And I did include that on there, unknown second district court judge. I imagine that they'll probably start at the beginning of next year. I think they're going to begin looking. July 1st, I think, starts the fiscal calendar year. So that's when they'll have the money. They'll open up for applicants, and then they'll decide, and I would assume it'd be around the first of the year, next year, that they'll be starting. I don't know what our chief judge is going to assign them to do. I don't know if they'll be all domestic, which then wouldn't include our office, but we now have three courtrooms. And so if there are three hearings that require the prosecuting, require a prosecuting attorney, I have to make sure someone's there to cover that. We're required to be at every hearing. There's no hearing that we can't not be there. So it's important that I make sure that if a judge sets something, and if we have three courtrooms going at the same time, that I have someone to cover each one of those cases. Benefits, I did want to point that out, too. The two part-time attorneys we have now are not receiving benefits. The two part-timers employees that I'm requesting would not receive benefits either. So I think that would help in saving some money. And I just, as a side note, would like to say, I know there's been some discussion about our benefits. I very much appreciate your benefits. I think they're wonderful. I have two kids and myself, and I, I tell you, I see money when I go get prescriptions and when I go to the doctor.
Yes, absolutely.
I think I made a comment to one of these people today that it frightens me that you put somebody new in the insurance business, and I don't know what happens after the third year. I don't have any strategic plan after the third year.
I very much appreciate it. So I do see more money in my pocket when I'm spending less on prescriptions and less at the doctor's offices and glasses and everything.
And thank you for saying that. We have some employees don't think they're-
I get these comments, insurance don't buy groceries.
It does when you're saving. It's, you know, it's money back in your pocket. You're not-
It does when you have cancer.
Right.
Or you need a transplant.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
So, sorry, I had so much I wanted to cover, because I just wanted to help everyone understand. Because I under, I live here now. I did move here. I don't know if everyone knew that. But when I first appeared before the commission, I was still living in Cherokee County. I moved here. So I'm a taxpayer here now, and I understand and I respect the concerns about not wanting more of a burden on them. I would not have requested this had I not felt that our office truly needed it because I think we try to be very frugal. We try to be smart with our time and with our resources. And I really think this is something we need to make sure that we're functioning properly and as expected. So.
And with the third courtroom, I-
Yes.
Probably have to have it.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer questions.
I just want to point out the capital, sorry, the capital outlay, just that one time. Our server, our last time we purchased it was December of 2018. So we are needing to kind of replace that for next year. So that would be the one, I know we've talked about capital outlay, but this will be one that we would kind of need for-
Okay.
Hopefully this year. If not, then we, they're really good about working with us, so.
If I hadn't bored you too much, I forgot. I wanted to talk about page four. Our budget in 2018 was $300,065, $324. We, it decreased the next two years, and it remained the same in 2021. I think primarily that was because of the pandemic. We were still functioning, but we weren't as we are now because there were, it was more Zoom court, you know, there weren't any jury trials because there weren't any being set. So we were still working, but there wasn't as much required of us. Now that we're back and running, I think, you know, more is going to be expected of us. And so I guess, to put it, the increase that we're asking for is, if I did the math correctly, we went down about $31,000, and with our increase, I think it was $65,071. But with what we had went down, our request for increase is really only $39,623 from what we were at in 2018, which is where we were, more like we're at now.
Yeah, and some of this capital, that capital will be a one-time deal, so it'll go down next year-
Yes.
About $10,000.
Yes.
So I can see that, too. And that's relatively like a half a mil, you know?
Where, where are we on our budget this year so far?
On their budget?
Yeah, six months in, where are we?
When I looked at May, do you mean like percentage-wise? I just looked at May before I came down here. We are at 34%.
Oh, you're in good shape then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really good shape.
We try to use our other funds as much as we can. You know, we're paperless. We try to do things to save money.
When we were looking at your fund, I can't remember last, well, you're in part of the general fund, so that won't make a difference. I was looking to see if our cash carryover was higher, but it wasn't last year in the general fund, so.
You would be, your target was 40s. You're under budget still?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was 34.75%, I can't remember exactly. Yeah, I always look at that to make sure we're doing good.
Yeah. You're doing great.
I do, too.
Yes, I know, I know. As you should. I understand that. So.
Okay.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Mark's coming home in a couple months. Mark's coming home in about 60, 90 days, he said. Wants to go to the Tiger football game. She's a real good friend of my youngest son.
Okay.
Yeah, we're planning our year chart for 2025.
Well, good. Get him stirred up. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'll try to get you on the panel.
Susan, when you're doing the budget process, it's, I was here last budget, but I wasn't really here. But how do you factor in the possibility of carryover into the really, the real numbers, I mean?
So I project, I look at where we are in the current year, and then I project out six months. And if I feel like we're not going to meet our targets, then I go ahead and build that in. I can pretty much see at this point if we're tracking to do a budget amendment. And so again, I build that in and say, this fund's going to have to have a budget amendment.
And the carryover is what you recommend, it's affects this number, so.
Yeah. That's what I'm, that's what I'm going to show, like on the appraiser. He had a better carryover than anticipated. And so that just helps us. It helps us reduce the levy this year.
Now, years ago, we was told government department should have zero carryover. I don't think you agree with that, do you?
No, you should always have three months.
Should have three months carryover in each department.
In each department, so you can cover wages. And the auditor would agree with that statement. Because if for some reason you have a tax distribution that doesn't come in on time, you want to be able to still go ahead and pay your employees.
Makes sense.
I don't remember who was next.
Is everyone, we need to get them all in here early, not 30 minutes.
See, they're unuseworthy.
Oh. The rocks add in. I didn't take long to hit them up there.
No, it didn't.
How much increase you want?
$40,000?
Let me say, don't shake, relax. How much? $40,000?
But it would just be a one-time thing because it's for election equipment. I got you where you have the money. I don't have, that's what I don't have.
She wants another $40,000. Look at Susan.
You sure? And your election equipment fund?
$80,000? So you're going, you're going to-
Because it's, I mean, it's $140,000 for the equipment and another $16,000 for the pool pads. Yeah.
That's a lot of money.
But I have $120,000 already saved up.
You should have saved a little more. I know.
Well, actually, I didn't. Kendall did.
Kendall, yeah. Kendall was pretty good at that.
Yes, she was.
All right. Can't believe you're on TV already. They're wrong, man. Well, they make the great. Tom Hill, so loud, retired. You know, if the economy was a bit better, I've always wanted to open up a small feed store, dog food and gun supplies. I think, right now, I think you lose, but I think you just don't know if you can make any money. Especially since tractor supply moved in, people like that, so.
Yeah, as you get the tractor supply, you know, law work with the dog food side of it, and all the vets, if they were, it'd be a tough market to know what's in there.
Yep. Take them all and get her, did it?
No.
What do you think, Shane? Pardon?
Don't know.
Hey, I have a little bit of autism.
Oh. I should make sure to ask Kelly, but I can ask you, you're the best city commissioner over there. What, I mean, we're not too far. I don't care. Shane's best. You know I don't care. We're not too far from getting beds on our sidewalk, Bill. What's the city going to do about the water base?
I've asked him three times. I'm going to talk to him again. I think Bill knows what's going on. It's just how they address it. Yeah, because I met with the architect. They're drawing out how I had them laid out. Yeah, because that was just another project. I took off hers.
Good.
Took it.
And when will we get beds? Next week or so?
Well, I haven't got the plans back, so I can call Frank and Hank.
Yeah, yeah, Frank, he's in LA, I mean, he's in LA. I really think Josh Young just turned people up by running against me. There's one another guy totally. Because like Justin says, it's so slight.
Come on, Matt, be nice. Yeah. Yeah.
TV interview. It didn't take long, did it? Need to see what station that is, run a list.
I didn't see.
Now, you don't really submit a budget, do you?
No, I don't.
So you don't see you on the list?
No.
Oh, good guess.
I'm above that.
I got you. I understand.
No, I just, I hadn't printed mine out. Because we were trying to tweak something.
Ashley, which TV is it? Yeah, I'm going to watch it tonight. Is it channel 12 or 7?
I want to say KSN's Law Call earlier.
Which is 16.
Lynn's looking right out the door. I should have remembered. I did something. I'm holding my maturity level.
Go forward.
That would be fun.
I don't. My mother-in-law knows my name.
Shalom, honey.
Cover one.
She likes my one with that little electric mower.
Yeah.
I've never seen somebody so excited to get something in my life.
It's really neat.
What is it?
Little electric push mower.
Cordless.
And a weed eater. Although the weed eater, there's not near enough string on that.
I know, I'm just talking. I won't go by how you're the best city commissioner.
Well, I do, why?
But, you know, I don't care. I know that, so.
And, technically, I'll turn back home. I'll say some comment.
Tell them, okay. Well, the first two, sort of that little bit of increase. Got any idea what we're going to get?
Nope.
Nope. I blame it on the clerk. Pardon? I blame it on the clerk.
I blame it on the clerk.
No.
Yeah.
You have, we had a twenty-five thousand dollar carryover.
Okay.
And so, we were, we only anticipated a sixty-four hundred carryover. And so, we could pull twenty out of the election fund itself.
Okay.
And move to your election reserve, which has a hundred and twenty-one, so that would be a hundred and forty-one thousand to work with. So, that would pay, so actually. Did I just totally throw you off?
No, um, and I don't have it, I don't have it here, but I can get it, um. So, the, from clear ballot, the quote is for a hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars. That is for all new equipment, except for the pole pads that we check in on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that is only one ADA compliant machine, which is the ballot marking device. A lot of places are going to where they have multiple of those, and that's what they're doing instead of ordering paper ballots to save on paper. We don't have the money, they're like forty-five hundred dollars a machine, but we are required to have one at every polling place. So, that is one for every polling place. Um, normally when we have the early voting, we have two cans. That is because the car can't read the amount of data to process all the ballots. The new ones can, so we'll have less of the tabulation devices. Um, that is also the design ballot, design software. So, we can design the ballots, um, and print them on a man for like the Yookaba and stuff like that, so that's everything. The one from Adken, which is sixteen thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars, um. I'll probably have Shane look at our pole pads that we have, because one of the things with Adken is they can actually, if our pole pads are okay, if they're not old and getting updates, we can possibly use those, that hardware with the software.
Okay.
And that would reduce the cost, but I don't have an exact figure on that. I wanna say that saves a cou- like two thousand dollars. So, a hundred and forty would almost pay for all of the, this equipment.
And then you need another.
And then it would be.
Another twenty?
I would say, well, 'cause this is sixteen-six, so I, and then, so seventeen, ye- yeah, about twenty. And if we can reuse our pole pads, if the hardware's good, and we can just buy the software, then that would possibly save us a few thousand. And the other thing I've increased is the, um, commodities for election is our big increase, because everything's went up. Um, envelopes are shortage, so our, and we have to have special equipment for elections, so we have cards that we have to draw, blue cards, we can't even get the weight of paper that they're really required to be on. So, we had to go with a lighter weight, not work with the post office so well, even though they said it would. Um, the envelopes, we ordered in like January or February, and we won't get them until October, so we're hoping we have enough for the primary, because there's shortage, so if, it's just everything has went up, so, and we have all paper ballots.
We need to see if there's some opticians into that, 'cause we're gonna have to change the way we were setting this running.
We've already discussed that.
Because you can't live this.
So. Right.
So, the equipment, that's really what's caused this to go up the most.
Yes.
Is that forty thousand dollars that will be actually paid out of a different fund, right? So, it will come out of the.
Oh, listen to Kate, she wants to, to have a little video of us working.
There's no audio, it's just visual.
Are you with KSN?
Yes.
On what, that's channel sixteen?
Yes.
Smile for the camera, guys.
Channel seven?
Have to get rid of.
Not quite.
So, that, that hundred and some is, um, already the Kendall had saved in the election equipment fund.
I hope you don't have video.
Oh, it wasn't.
Yeah, the audio, it's probably a good thing.
Yeah, the audio.
Are you gonna show that to me, that was at that here?
Well, it's not listed on here, but it's, we don't, we've always just put money into it, we've never used it, because that's specifically what we were saving it for. Anything we have left over in a year in the election, we roll over into that for this purpose.
They forgot to, one year wiped out their account.
Right, yeah.
So, it's, so you're really requesting like ninety-one five is what you're really requesting, right? Out of the election? Yeah, because that's computer, well. That would come out of your equipment reserve, right?
Well, I put it on election commodities, because I took off what was in, when I ran the report, it showed like a hundred and twenty thousand in the equipment reserve fund.
Mm-hmm.
So, I took that off of there, and so I put that forty in commodities, because it has to be, I said it before.
Yeah, but what we'll do.
But then you said there was an extra amount.
There's an extra twenty, so.
So, that would actually decrease.
I would say what, what you're really asking is the ninety-one five for your normal annual audit. That forty thousand needs to get moved over to that equipment reserve. And so, you're gonna have a hundred and forty-one in cash available, so this forty will come off of that. And you said it's about a total of about a hundred and sixty, so we're looking for about twenty thousand dollars. Now, the question I have for the commission is, we have a general equipment fund, and then we also have a capital improvement fund. In that capital improvement fund, there's like two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars sitting in there, and I know it's, I know it is for special projects. It's kind of a cash reserve that we have set in there.
Yes, it is.
Um.
New windows for the courthouse.
So, that would be the only, uh, only place we really have to go for additional dollars.
Right.
So, um, once I get the budgets entered, and I can see how that's gonna affect everything, I can determine if we've got enough new assessed valuation to maybe capture some, some extra dollars.
Maybe before you leave, uh, of course, but, but is this building scheduled for any type of maintenance or anything, next few years, money-wise? Is it all, everything's okay?
We haven't talked about those bids for outside.
Yeah.
There's some of it that really needs addressed, even before the windows. The tuck pointing and stuff needs taken.
Yeah, tuck pointing, the parapet up on the top needs addressed.
I've got it split out.
That's something I'll probably start, we're doing.
They should, they should.
Yeah, 'cause if we, if we wanna get on their schedule.
Yeah, we probably should.
But he said he would move us, if we wanted to do it, he would move us ahead of a few other jobs that we could have done for it.
Did a great job on the steps, if he could do that parapet, and I'm afraid it would wait too much longer, the, the freezing and thawing's gonna knock one of them off.
He might remember what the tuck point was gonna cost.
I mean, off the top of my head, tuck pointing, cleaning, is like maybe eighty-five or something?
Eighty-five now. Something I gotta do.
I mean, the bad part is the big capstones up on top, we may have like inch and a half gaps in between.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
They're not good.
I know, I brought up some different.
I know that it has not been, they're not any better.
Okay, so as well. These, do you have the two quotes, or they have, they should have been attached.
I changed the subject, I'm not supposed to.
No, I don't even think I got the budget.
Oh, well, yeah, I did, right here.
Yes, I do.
What's that note stand for?
So, I have, the quote for clear ballot is one forty-one, two eighty-two, and.
So, Susan, what is her total increase, not total, but that we need to be concerned with her increase? I've got fifty thousand, seven fifty, but that's probably not right, so.
No, because there was more that they need to transfer over, another twenty-five million.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanna say thank you for your time, good luck with your next big adventure.
Hey, thank you.
You guys have a good rest of your day.
You too.
Thank you.
So.
And possibly the sixteen thousand, depending on what our iPads are, we could possibly reuse those. I mean, they're still gonna have to be replaced eventually, but I don't know, I mean, as long as they're getting updates, I think we can still use them for the new software.
That'd be, iPad's a good update for three or four generations.
And I, I don't know what ones we have all, so.
You mean, what, two years old?
In the election fund, it looks like she's asking about five thousand dollars.
They have them on loan before they purchased them, so.
I mean, I'm sure they're iPad hangers.
And the other?
And in her regular clerk account, which comes out of your general fund, um, it's about a six thousand dollar increase.
But I will say that five thousand of that, the commission approved for me to spend out of general for training, and so I have included that five thousand in this, so I'm actually spending that this year, it's just not, wasn't in my budget. And I will say, our election equipment is from two thousand and six, um, it has worked very well, but it is old, and it was just serviced yesterday, and the supervisor, repairman, um, he said that they're, they don't make it anymore, the ADA machines or the tabulation devices, and they're also having trouble getting parts.
No, figure it out.
Um, there's one place in the States that makes those parts, they are limited to five per month for the entire company. Um, so they had to get some from the UK, but they're not, they're having, they're having a lot of trouble getting parts for this equipment too, so as long as it's working, it's okay, but if something happens, it may not be easy to repair. And I will also say that the clear ballot, and that comes with, um, the stuff to program the ballots. I have not had training on that, and I didn't wanna pay for it, because I was hoping to get new equipment, so Dreta and I are trying to use Kendall's notes and the book to program it ourselves, so we don't have to pay for programming this year, or to pay for training, to, to save money, so it's not going real great, but it's going.
But by, the primary needs to be going great, right?
Yeah. Before then, 'cause we have to get them printed and back to us.
Yeah.
By the thirteenth of July. Time to be postmarked by the thirteenth of July.
Can I have a little bit of time crunch?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, you guys have any other questions for Ash?
Ooh.
Okay, as I, um, develop and put numbers into the budget and stuff, I'll probably just come, come to you and say, okay, here's where I think we can move some things around and just kinda play with the numbers.
And I can, I was gonna say, and I can talk to Adken about reusing the pole pads we have to see how much. If it, I don't know if, if it saves us very much, it might be worth it, if not, it may be, that's just a. And I don't know also if we do that, if the pole pads that we have back there, I mean, we've paid for them, I don't know if that company could wipe them, and possibly they could be used for the county, if that's.
Okay.
Might be an option too, to reuse, obviously the election equipment, no one's gonna, wanna do anything with it.
Right.
But the iPads, if they could wipe them, and we've already paid for them and own them, we may be able to, to use them for something.
Awesome.
So, let me know how much benefit's going to go up this year?
Um, I haven't, I asked Courtney that, have you been notified of health insurance increases and also, uh, work comp? That's what I need to know.
That's awesome.
Okay. Would you just ask?
Jess was just here today.
Would you ask her if she's seen any across there?
Yeah, normally.
Yeah.
I think it normally come out in July.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right down to the line.
Yeah.
I know she's got, of course, they give, I know she has the increases for what ours goes up in July, but I don't know if she has anything for the first of the year yet.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'll need.
So, in my total on the clerk, 'cause that's where all of our benefits are pulled, so I put, I put the total there, and then I added the benefits underneath, so you could actually see what the increase was, and then the benefits. I put separate, because it hasn't been figured in to the individual departments whatsoever.
Right, that's good. That's good, that helps make it a little bit easier to.
Time to go to the allergy shot.
I found that.
And part of the other reason I increased on clerk was because of publication fees, because this year we're supposed to get reimbursed by the state for the R and R, but next year we won't.
Right.
That quote for the building, the old one from two years ago was eighty-six thousand five hundred, the new one is a hundred and ten, even.
I'm gonna review into the register of deeds, Solak, she's my hair day.
It's something we gotta do.
Yeah.
I guess we gotta do.
Because the other one was.
Well, I was hoping to use Miss Grant money, or the Windsor Women money.
Yeah.
Where would the mailings come out of, would that?
And that's the one that was kinda flinging.
Send those letters to all the taxpayers?
But I don't know where we're going with winning money now.
Yeah. When do we get our?
Because I didn't figure that in here.
No?
Where do we get our next round of Biden money?
We already got it.
Already got it.
And there's pink.
Yeah.
About the same.
Not spent yet.
About the same amount?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, we could set that as a line item in the general government.
I mean, that's, 'cause that's several thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, and it's really, it's really a, I, I feel like it's all three groups, county treasurer, praiser, and county clerk, I feel like it's all three.
Come in, Betty.
Notifying, so.
One year.
Did the guidelines change on that money? I heard it, it did a little bit.
I heard it, it did a little bit, what it can be spent for.
Uh, yes, it is. Yep.
When you look at, when you look at replacing windows in this place, you're gonna save a lot of money on energy, a lot.
Can any of that be spent on this property? Very good.
Hi Patty. You've got a copy of that, okay. Okay.
Do you have a copy? On the land. How are you Patty?
Just fine.
Good.
This shouldn't take very long, because what I'm actually asking for is what I received last year. No increase, no.
Thank you very much, so, good job.
You're our hero, yes.
There you go. And last year, I did give back quite a bit out of my motor vehicle. But now, I won't give back as much this year because I'm fully staffed this year, I was not much. So, but other than that, do you want me to go through the numbers, or? Cause you've got a copy of the motor vehicle fund, which that's not a budgeted fund, actually. But, uh, I've gone through that, uh, got the, uh, benefits, all, everything figured in. So, it looks a little higher than it did last year, but it's not because we didn't pay the benefits out of my account.
Right.
Right.
So, does anybody have any questions, or you want me to go into more detail, or?
Yeah, I just made you look good, cause I asked for a bunch of money.
Oh, good.
Ashley's, Ashley's not our hero.
Okay.
You are.
You might be the only one besides Matt, that's all right.
Okay. Okay, anything else you need?
No, it looks great, thank you. Thank you for doing a good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, step up, Matt.
Put the plate.
So, Matt is essentially asking for the exact same amount also. However, I wanna go back to what I, the comment I made this morning about neighborhood revitalization. Next week, I'll probably ask you to, to redo that motion, cause I wasn't thinking, um, the appraiser actually has their own fund. And, um, this actually, the neighborhood revitalization money really should go back into his department, because he's the one doing all the work. So, um, I kinda was rethinking this, and as I look at it, every year, he transfers about ten thousand dollars from his budget to his equipment fund, so that he can replace cars, and whatever software he might need for, um, what they're doing. And so, I'd like to move all those funds, so that neighborhood, um, revitalization fee into his equipment fund. And then each year, moving forward, we would split it. Ten thousand would come into the appraiser fund to help with operations, and ten thousand would go into his equipment fund. And he will have a pretty good, um, reserve built up. Um, fifty, he's got sixty, a hundred and twenty, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars built up in that appraiser reserve fund. So, he'll be set for quite a while, um, when he needs to start replacing some vehicles and things like that. So, um, I felt like that was a better option. And then it also helps us, if you'll notice, uh, there's one, um, area that's circled. He actually will drop the levy a little bit. Um, last year it was one point seven five two, this year it'll be one point six four. And I even built in a cash reserve, but we just talked about earlier. So that every year, we're carrying over forty thousand dollars to kinda help us with the next operational year. So, we had enough, um, money savings that we've had to be able to truly have a good balanced budget, um, for the appraiser's office. So, if everybody's okay with that, that approach, um, that's what I would, I think would be best use for our money.
And that transfer money was sixty-something?
Yeah, it was sixty-five from the, uh, holding fund. And then, um, there was an additional thirty-seven thousand that was already setting in the fee fund. So, we'll move both, both of those up into his reserve fund. So, um, and if, if we get to the point where we feel like we need to, um, reduce the levy, we have that flexibility with some of this money, that maybe we could move more into the appraiser fund to...
Ridding my mind, it was just a...
To reduce the levy, I wasn't in your mind, to reduce the levy to help us with, uh, maybe some other increases we might have.
Okay, good idea, thank you.
Yep, pretty simple. Um, we got the one truck, it's an O-seven, it's probably got another year left on it, and then the, the two thousand thirteen truck. The good thing would be is to get rid of those two trucks, because they are trucks, and go to something like the R four that we have, that gets a little better gas mileage, cause gas prices keep going, so.
More room too, of course, storage equipment or anything you need to take with you.
Yeah, yeah, and the downside, I mean, the O-sevens, it's on its last legs, but the two thousand thirteen's still in good shape, but it's two-wheel drive, and for a lot of what we do, it's, if the weather's bad, it's pretty much useless.
We might have a use for that vehicle in another department.
Another branch, you probably could use it.
Um, actually, the hospital.
Oh, yeah.
We took their truck from them, and they do use it occasionally, so if it's an older truck, that...
Two thousand thirteen, two-wheel drive, work truck, so.
Yeah, that, that would be perfect.
That'd be a good one for them, they could run errands and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
And one of them could be, if you don't need two, Eric could use one of them for mowing trucks, so, sell it to him.
Well, the O-seven, I mean, could use, I mean, it, it needs a little bit of work, but it's still...
No, wait, we're trying to reduce taxes.
Eric's got a lot of money.
So, okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, it would be, well... Yeah, telling we're running way, way, way ahead of time, which is great, gives me more time to...
I'm sorry, we could do what?
Oh, yours is done, I didn't have you down. But let's go over yours.
He said he was above all of us, that's what he said. Okay.
Yeah, here, here, get it over with.
And register deeds coming up too, isn't she?
She is sick today.
Oh, so we're not, we're...
Yeah.
Who, her?
Yeah.
We hit, well, we're done there, aren't we?
We're almost done.
Go home.
Mm-hmm.
Probably on board with the fish. Yeah, let's after the fish.
Some mines, just same as it was last year in my contractual commodities and, uh, capital outlay. The wages are different, cause we tacked on all the benefits and stuff. Um, we talked about moving Brian up with the salary, cause he's on hourly now, and get more out of him. And that was what an extra for, for him.
A good idea.
And then Jimmy, I think we had him like getting bumped just a little, to even out that scale.
Got two pretty good guys there, that does a good job, it looks like, so.
And Jimmy's will, once I get the salary schedule put together, like what we have kinda discussed, um, he'll be a part of that whole piece, and so, um, the realignment will, will affect some departments and will affect others. So, um, but we'll talk through that.
Okay, looks good, thank you.
Okay, at the next meeting, I'll have a good chunk of this already put into the, to the budget work document. We'll kinda see how it's affecting the levy.
Just on the phone, he'll be here.
Okay, perfect.
I sent Paul's a message and see if that quote's still good.
Okay.
Since past ninety days, I'm sure it will be.
Actually, you were the only out on the bunch this morning, today.
It's just a one-time.
Okay.
We're gonna give you a hard time over that.
Yeah. Yep.
You should have been here when I asked Terry Graham and Gary Houston and Bill Britton for a quarter of a million dollars for software and servers.
Terry pass out?
They did it.
Now, do you have anything to do with the county attorney's server, do they do that all on their end?
No, that's all tied to the six judicial districts.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we go up and fix their stuff, but they're tied to some central server in Miami County.
Gotcha.
And we just give them phones and email and all that.
And Rhonda, I think I sent you a message, and Rhonda should be here also, yes, yeah.
Will.
Oh.
So.
There he is.
We're, we're way ahead of schedule, I'm sorry.
I guess, by a hour. Okay.
Good afternoon.
How you guys doing?
We're good, unless you're, unless you're gonna spoil our day.
No, actually, I'm gonna make you really, really happy.
How happy?
Good, cause I...
How many happy? Can you make up for us?
First of all, I cut my budget way back initially from what I gave you.
Okay.
Okay. Um, primarily because of the money that I get from EMPG. And, uh, I'll pass it around.
We've kinda, we need to talk about that too, where you're here, Will, because, um, I have, can I have one more of those?
One more, yeah.
Um...
There you go.
Because I've spoken with the auditor about our carryover that we have.
Yep.
And, um... He feels like that's a violation of having that much of a carryover. And so, the consensus would be to move that to the general fund to offset last year's wages and also the prior year. Um, because that's what we reported to the state of how we were using the funds.
Right.
Does that make sense? So, you have like twenty, I'm gonna say like twenty-two thousand dollars carrying over?
Yeah.
From last year? And so, what we should do is make a transfer back to the general fund to cover your wages that were paid out of the general fund last year.
Okay.
Um, with that, those, that carryover amount.
I'd like to know who he talked to, and basically sit down and talk to him.
Okay, you're more than welcome to, but he, he...
But that's fine.
He will show it as a violation if we, if we don't, um...
In other words, we gotta use up the money.
Every year?
Right.
Yes, has to be obligated.
Well, well, like I said, we'll go through that. Right now, I just got another check for eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six bucks. And my total now is forty-eight thousand, four hundred and seven dollars, okay? Now, that money that I get is through a grant, and the grant money is accumulated by doing a lot of stuff. She knows everything I gotta do. And it's part of the credentialing program and all that. So, what I wanted to do with that money is start paying on things that I sent her an email about. Uh, pay the Verizon bill, any copies that's coming, cause it's all to support my department.
But, let me stop you right there. The problem is, is that the report that you send to the state, the annual report at the end, you're showing that the portion that you're receiving in grant funds is paying for your wages.
Right.
And so, that's how we have to spend the money.
Well, not to get in an argument, cause I don't wanna do that. Um, this money, and this is according to, and I've talked to my district supervisor or Southeast Kansas. Um, and I wanna verify with this new EMPG person as well, that we get this money at the end. We don't have to verify, when Shane was around, we did it. You had to, you had to spend money on things like radios and stuff like that, then put in for reimbursement, they give back to you. This money here evidently, and I, like I said, I didn't do a lot of research, but I did some, is, is and can be used to pay for anything. Montgomery County has bought a vehicle, um, I mean, I can just, the list can go on and on and on. So, really, what needs to be done, the grant money comes from the federal government. It comes down through KDEM, Kansas Division, Martin Manna. Um, and if you notice that I'm, my speech is not right, well, it ain't. Uh, I got a neurological problem, and they're gonna, I just got off the phone with the doctor, and they're gonna recommend this guy to me, whoever it's Kansas City. Hopefully, it'll get straightened out. But due to age, you know, that's, that's really...
Really?
Yeah. Anyway, but it's, it's really affected me.
I bet.
But Montgomery County and multiple other counties are doing the same exact thing. And I just need to get more clarification by going back through the new EMPG people at KDEM and, and get this straightened out.
Yeah, I'm sure you can get the information, and working with Susan and Terry, to make sure we don't have a budget violation.
Yeah.
Everything'd be great, so, yeah.
But I was gonna, I was gonna apply it to my salary, cause that's really the initial reason why you do it. But they, they being, and I, he's coming in Thursday, my areas, he's not supervisor, he's just a representative. Uh, but we're gonna talk about then, and really get down to brass tacks of what counties are doing. And they all, Brett Rowe, who used to be in charge of EMPG at the state, he's the one that told every county and every, whatever, merch manager, that this is how you do it. Cause they, what was going on is, like I say, if you had to buy radios from this piece of equipment, or support that, or do whatever, they were pushing back. The federal government was coming in, and they were just pushing back, pushing back really hard. So, they said, okay, and I asked them point-blank what this money is really for, to support my department, okay? Give me some details, what is it going to support? Now, right now, we're paying out of this money, all the, the electric bill for in that building, gas bill, um, I can't remember what else, we've, yeah, a- and tons of other things. We, I use this money to put all that furniture in that building, redo the whole building, believe it. So, yeah, that's what, that's the direction I'm going, and I'll get back with you and make sure, and Terry. But I want, really wanna hear it direct from KDEM.
I'd get it in writing, so Terry's, Terry has something to, to support in his audit.
Right, right.
Cause he's looking at it as it's federal dollars, and federal dollars cannot carry over from year to year to year to year. They have to be spent for the, for the purpose intended, um, each year.
That's fine, like I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dig into it, but that's how much money we got in and out, forty, forty-eight thousand bucks. So, uh, and we just, I just got a check for the twenty, twenty-one, uh, year, and it was eighteen thousand dollars. So, anyway, other than that, I did cut my budget back, cause I looked at, and I wish, and I hate to say this, but I wish we could get more of these more often. But I, I did take this and looked at it, and the percentage that I've used is very low. There's a lot of training that's gonna start ramping up soon, meetings, so on and so forth, um, but...
Have you been getting them monthly? I'm sending them out monthly.
No, this first, first one I got, and I don't know when.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll check my email, cause I've been sending them out monthly.
All of them?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, evidently, I ain't getting them.
Okay.
So, but anyway, um, I wasn't really in the dark, cause I keep track of my figures anyway. Um, but, um, that's pretty much where I'm at.
Okay.
I did cut my budget way back, um, cause I know the county needs the money. And hey, after looking at this report right here, which was the latest one that you sent, um, I'm pretty comfortable with it, so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
And if you ever don't get those, just holler at us, and we can...
Run them, yeah, they're easy to run, yeah.
Or if you want in between, we can always run something.
No, once a month is great, um, as far as I'm concerned. But, like I said, and, and I'm... Now, once a month is great, um, as far as I'm concerned, but like I said, and, and I'm on, Josh Smith is coming in Thursday. And I'll be talking to him about the EMPG stuff, and then I'm gonna push it even further, because he's just a regional coordinator. I'm gonna push it further and get direct information from the state of exactly how they, if they want the money spent, if they. Because they're the ones that deal it out. If they want it spent every year, no problem, I'll make a list.
Thank you, Will.
You all done?
Yeah, we're done.
Cool.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're done for the day.
You bet, there you go. See you later.
All right, so we will do, um, register of deeds next week, um, district court, the sheriff, and public works. Hopefully, we'll have time for all those.
Sheriff EMS.
EMS, um, I'll probably do EMS, so, yeah, that's a new one.
I have one that was a volunteer.
Yeah, you sure you don't want to? Probably just use what I used over at the city, so.
All true, uh, see how, see what the bad news is, what was the good news?
Yeah.
See, he lowered his certificate from the primary.
Right, exactly, exactly.
They're not gonna make money because I asked for money.
Well, yeah, I want the money. I would have been back too, but I had to go to I N three therapy.
Okay, we'd have to adjourn, we really, I didn't think so, we're not really in a meeting.
Had the work session?
Yeah.
Hey.
You might want.